Good afternoon. We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council June 16th, 2020 to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tim André Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Dylan Meek, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. Please join us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meeting Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded and video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary by 11:00 AM today. The city secretary will read into the record the comments submitted for items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Individuals who registered to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed to speak via conference phone for three minutes. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. There is one change to the agenda today. I'd like to remove Resolution 2020-402 because we, I think we have some additional questions internally and that, that particular item has to do with the reserve requirement in the general fund. We'd like to bring that back at a future budget audit committee meeting. Under Employee Recognition and Organizational Update, I'd like to call on Assistant City Manager and Police Chief Ryan Holt to introduce our newly sworn in police officers from last week.
All right, Council Mayor, I'm pleased to be here today to introduce the 76th Waco Police Academy graduates. They started with us on Wednesday, the 10th. First, we have Officer J.D. Aguilar. Officer Aguilar is 24 years old and is from Corpus Christi, Texas. He became and worked as an EMT while a senior in high school, and then he went to Baylor University and worked in the ER at Hillcrest and AMR. Aguilar always wanted to pursue law enforcement at an early age, but was directed to pursue medicine by his family. After practicing emergency medicine for five years, Aguilar still had the desire and dream to incorporate law enforcement into his life and was fortunate to get on with Waco PD. Officer Austin Deem is 23 years old and is from Crawford, Texas. He went to Charlton State University and received his bachelor's in criminal justice. Officer Deem came to Waco PD from working in the jail with the McClintock County Sheriff's Office. Officer Deem is also a second generation Waco PD officer with his father Brian Deem also being an officer for the Waco Police Department. Officer Tyler Green moved to Waco in 2019 after graduating from the University of California Davis with a bachelor's in political science and a minor in sociology. Tyler also holds an associate's degree from Maricosta Community College. Prior to his employment with the Waco Police Department, Tyler held various jobs at Starbucks, HEB, and the UC Davis Coffee House. But he was also a sports writer for the sports network SB Nation for five years covering the Oakland Raiders. Officer Jeremy Hoffman is a 2013 Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University graduate with a bachelor's degree in aeronautical engineering. Jeremy is also two classes away from completing his master's degree through the American Military University in Emergency Management. Jeremy spent 20 years in the United States Army initially as an infantry soldier and then as a UH-60 helicopter instructor pilot. After the Army, Jeremy flew helicopters in Saudi Arabia for the state-owned Saudi Aramco Oil Company in the Persian Gulf. He's also flown in the Gulf of Mexico and most recently was flying emergency medical helicopters for Care Flight in Whitney. Officer John Kirchner was born in California while his father was stationed there when serving in the Navy and moved to Waco in 2017. He began with the Waco Police Department as a 911 dispatcher for about a year before attending the police academy. John is currently pursuing his bachelor's degree in business and will be completing his degree online through Thomas Edison State University based out of New Jersey. Officer Daniel Martinez was raised, was born and raised in Waco. He graduated from La Vega High School in 2017 and graduated from MCC with an associate's degree in criminal justice in 2019. Officer Martinez is now 21 years old, having, having turned 21 in the academy. Officer Martinez has wanted to be in law enforcement since he was a young teenager and is excited to begin his law enforcement career with us at Waco PD. Officer Jerry Matthews was born in Baltimore, Maryland and raised in different states throughout the country. After finishing high school at McKinney North, he enlisted in the Navy. In his eight years of service with the Navy, he was stationed in Japan where he met his wife Nanae and carried out numerous missions around the world. After being stationed in San Diego, California and Key West, Florida, he moved to Waco and was hired by Waco PD after being a park ranger. Officer Antonio Moreno was born in Waco, Texas and raised in Mexico. He came to the United States at the age of 15, graduated from Marlin High School, and received an associate's degree in automotive technology. Officer Moreno worked at the McClintock County Jail for three years before applying to the Waco Police Department. Officer Jennifer Ratliff grew up in Phoenix, Arizona. She moved to Waco at 16 and she was a representative for Texas Law Shield and worked up to being a district manager for the last several years. While with Texas Law Shield, she assisted with teaching classes and managing a number of individuals. She's wanted to be an officer since becoming involved with Texas Law Shield. Officer Amber Richardson has been with the Waco Police Department for seven years as a crime scene technician. Prior to that, she worked for Waco Mortuary as a licensed-in bomber. She's lived in Waco all of her life and has raised, was raised and graduated from Robinson, Texas and has two sons. Officer Demmanuel Watson was raised in the city of Corsicana, Texas and graduated from Corsicana High School. He moved to Waco in 2017 to start his academic career at MCC in the field of criminal justice. He was a full-time student and continued his education to the point he graduated with an associate's while attending the academy. Officer Demmanuel Watson also turned 21 while in the academy. And finally, Officer Kyle Wiseman was born in San Diego, California and raised in Fallbrook, California. He moved to Axtel in 2015. Kyle attended Baylor University from 2015 to 2019 and graduated with a bachelor's in marketing. At 22 years old, Kyle worked at the McClintock County Jail until he was hired on with Waco PD.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ryan. Well, we really appreciate that whole, that class of new, new graduates. Welcome to the Waco Police Force.
Also, Mayor and Council, Laura Cox, our budget manager, has decided to leave her position effective June 19th and to spend more time with her family. Laura came to Waco in the fall of 1994 to attend Baylor. After graduation, she began her service to the citizens by working for the city's external auditing firm and then joining our finance department as a senior financial analyst in 2005. Laura has agreed to assist the city on a part-time basis until the 2021 budget is filed. We really appreciate all the great work Laura's done and the help that she's provided us in the budget process, her commitment to the city, and we wish her the best in her future. And now, well, got the informal reports. Don't want to call on Hosey just yet here.
Is that my, is that my introduction?
No, not, not yet. We have two informal reports today. The first is amendment to the Cultural Arts Facility Consulting Services contract with Keane Independent Research. And the second report is a smartphone app the Solid Waste Services Department is rolling out for interactive services in the next month.
May I? Do we have a comment here on this item?
Yes, we do. For informal report 2020-389, Solid Waste Smartphone App. Research, searching the recycle Waco app for styrofoam yields instructions to put this item in your gray garbage cart, which will direct it to the landfill. As an alternative, the Waco Friends of Peace Climate has been offering periodic collection of styrofoam for recycling for about one year now. For anyone watching, our next drive-through styrofoam collection will occur on June 27th from 9:00 AM until noon in the parking lot at the corner of Waco Drive and Valley Mills Drive in front of Ocean Buffet. For details, go to www.friendsofpeace.org. I will make two observations in reference to this event. Since landfills are a major source of GHG emissions, recycling styrofoam reduces these emissions. This is important because Waco's landfill gas flaring does not eliminate GHG emissions. The city should consider adding a statement in the app that other organizations or companies in Waco may provide styrofoam recycling to alert citizens of this important option. Thank you. Did I say, that was from Alan Northcutt.
Thank you. I'll just brief, I'll just briefly comment on both the informal reports. The first one with Keane and the Cultural Arts Facility, it's a worthwhile project. Appreciate the work they've done so far and it's a good team they've got there and pushing everything back six months, I think makes a lot of sense and we'll be taking a closer look at that project here in the third and fourth quarter. The, the second one on Solid Waste Smartphone, I think the great app here and very keeping up with the, with the latest technology on this stuff and state-of-the-art stuff. It should, there's a nice list of things that we're trying to get done here on page 12 of the packet. Reducing call volumes, address complaints, increase diversion rates, increase awareness, reduce costs, ease in communication and bilingual communication. Also, I think all these are very important as we have a more efficient and basically improved service. What we're trying to get there, best class, best-in-class services for the, for the solid way. So I think it's, it's a great report there. Appreciate both reports.
Um, just one of the things that I, I made mention when we met earlier in the week. As we are rolling out these apps that are incredible and beneficial to us, because you know, we are our consumers as well and our constituents and citizens of our city, until if, if there is going to be one like umbrella app that will then have all of the bits, because it, it may seem a little confusing which, which you do for what. I would recommend that on our site that we have something kind of like how the larger agencies who have suites of, of products or apps, you know, this is the city of Waco Public Works and these are the, the options that you could have. Because for instance, the Water Collect and the, the, all of the new things we're rolling out. So that way it's kind of clearer to paint a picture for our citizens and our customers of what's available and what does what. So if that could be how we market, market our product, our, our application products as a suite. And so these are all the things that, you know, we're doing to make your life easier until, you know, until we have maybe one app that'll do everything. But in the interim, let's, let's package them together. So one isn't confused and I think that this does this and that does that. Does that make any sense?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Okay. And now I'd like to invite Larry to give the Hosey report.
Okay. As Marley, can you get the pictures up for me? Okay. Oops. Start on the first one. All right. In a partnership with East Waco Library, Solid Waste Services has installed another of their Big Belly Automated Trash and Recycling Stations at the East Waco Library. The new station is similar to the one located on University Parks Drive and should help encourage people along Elm Avenue to properly dispose of their waste. As we were just talking about, as staff continues to explore development of a single smart app for the city, the staff is offering this interim app to help our solid waste customers. There's a new smart app, smartphone app that helps customers remember when their trash and recycling day is and allows customers to receive reminder texts from Solid Waste Services, report missed pickup dates, as well as an in-depth calendar of collection dates, including holidays. With the app, you can also be connected with other city departments and report street light outages, illegal dumping of litter, report potholes, plus get information from Parks Department webpage. This is again, kind of what we're doing on the interim, but we will be making one app, just as you all have just discussed, to pull them all together. With the governor announcing additional openings in June, many of our popular summer attractions and programs have opened. On June the 3rd, area splash pads provided cooling fun for kids along the outdoor, along with outdoor pavilions able to open and the start of the Parks Department's creative virtual recess summer programming. Beginning the week of June the 15th, the three community centers opened for limited cool indoor activities and the Riverbend Double R Fields opened for play. All four libraries were able to open with their grab-and-go browsing and checkout program, use of computers by appointment, the creative virtual summer reading club, and a fun text message scavenger hunt. A lot of creative ways to help area families with summer activities while still dealing with the coronavirus. On June the 4th, city engineer staff held a graduation for Ette Voit, newest engineer in training who graduated from A&amp;M this spring. Ette is American, is from American Samoa and her family was going to come to her graduation, but COVID-19 changed all of that. So the city staff borrowed a cap and gown, played the Aggie War Fight Song and presented her with a diploma and then had cake and snacks. Other departments in the Development Center made, who made up Ette's city family, joined in the graduation ceremony to help make it a special occasion. A virtual public meeting was hosted from the third floor of Waco City Hall by Better Streets Waco Team on Thursday, June the 11th to provide updates to residents on the Highway 84 area and various street projects planned for the area. Residents could watch a live webinar type presentation from the comfort of their homes and call in questions that they had. Seventy-eight participants, people participated in the webinar and gave vital input to the plans and processes underway for the development of the streets in that area. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor and Council, I'd like-
This is, again, I'll just comment on that, the, the last one, I think, the Better Streets Waco, really, it was just last week, last Thursday, I think. Again, kind of a new way of doing a neighborhood association, kind of a meeting, but I appreciate everybody's efforts with the Better Streets Waco Team and also the citizens of West Highway 84 and kind of do a, do a new way to do a, a meeting. I think we had, I think, did you say 73? Larry, just a really good turnout there and we're able to plow through some pretty heavy issues and a lot of progress in streets out there. And I, I just appreciate everybody's involvement in that meeting.
Also, just let me add, of course, I'm excited about the Big Belly. It was, it's amazing and it's, it's beautiful and reflective of the fantastic art that has continued to tell the story of East Waco that is on the library mural, the outside wall. So that it is seen somewhere else is strong kudos. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are five public hearings today and Clint Peters are planning and inspection director will be here to review those items with you during the work session. Under resolutions, there are 17 today. The first I'd like to mention is Resolution 2020-400. This authorizes the city manager to use competitive steel proposal procedure to procure private security services for the Waco Regional Airport. Resolution 2020-404, this is a one-year renewal agreement for investment management services with Patterson and Associates beginning on July 1st, 2020 and not exceeding $32,000.
On that one, I had kind of asked just in a one-on-one meeting, but I would like to see just our, our prior advisor. I'd just, I'd like to get a comparison of their investment performance and the yield they've been able to get for their other public clients, just so we can make sure that we, that the, that our investments in, in our pool of, of cash is, is, I don't know, that we're being, we're getting a comparative yield from our investments.
Yes, sir. We are preparing a report on that and we'll have it to you at a future meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Resolution-
I'll just, this is, this is Holmes again. I was just getting back up to 403, the SpaceX kind of initiative. I did, I think SpaceX has been a great partner and I'm glad that the city of Waco could, could get involved here on this project. Kind of give them more of a presence right here in Waco and I, I like that aspect of it. And really congratulate the SpaceX team on their recent rocket activity and space station activity. And it's a really important business to have here in central Texas. And I'll personally invite Elon Musk to move his Tesla factory to Waco. I think that would be a great addition to the central Texas landscape also. But anyway, that's, that's a good one there.
You and the chamber both. Um, city manager, just tell before we go on 400, I would like to, and I know that we have been focused and prioritizing seeking out MBE businesses for our contracts. And I think this is a prime example and opportunity to look at historically disadvantaged businesses as options as we go through to secure this new security contract.
I just wanted to echo what Jim said regarding SpaceX. I think that having a diverse economy is really important. And I think that what I love about our economic development department and our economic development partners is to really work to, to have, you know, be intentional about small businesses as well as big industry. And having really strong and healthy mom and pop shops is critical. And having world-renowned companies like SpaceX is important to our economy too. And I think that getting behind this initiative and, and making sure that a company like SpaceX that has good, high-paying jobs and attracts top talent to the Waco business community is valuable and important. And I'm thankful for that and think that, you know, it's fun to work with our city staff and our economic development partners who place such high priority on small business, big industry, and really are, have a, have a commitment to build out a diversified economy and ecosystem. So I think that this is a good one. I'm excited for it.
Thank you, councilmembers. Next resolution is Resolution 2020-405. And this is a, a second agreement modification for research services between Baylor and the McClintock County Health District's Health Education Department. This is for an additional year ending July 31st, 2021. The contract amount increases by $69,000 and so that we'll have a total contract amount that does not exceed $133,000. This is for six interns. They will be extremely useful assisting the health district with the COVID-19 response.
Wiley, thank you so much. Just to thank you, I have a quick question. So just for clarification, it is for six total interns, correct? Three from last year and then three new ones for this year. Am I reading that correctly?
Six total. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Resolution-
Oh, sorry, Wiley. I'll just add, no, I think this is great. I always enjoy, you know, Baylor is such a resource in our community and being able to leverage some of their graduate students to assist in a lot of the good work that we're doing here in, in our public departments, I think is, it, this is a worthwhile investment. And I hope that at the end of it, that we can get some report back on the actual work product they were able to achieve. I know, I think as we're seeing with the case counts right now, that their work on programmatically with the virus and with other things that the health, health district can use and all hands on deck and all the resources they can get right now. So I'm, I'm thankful that we're going to have this additional capacity coming through the summer and looking forward to seeing what good work they're going to be able to, to put forth through this internship process. So I, I like this program and would love to see more of them throughout the season.
Thank you, Council. Resolution 2020-411, this amends our existing interlocal with McClintock County for the administration and enforcement of the game room regulations in the county and within the city's jurisdiction. I'd like to thank McClintock County leadership and the Sheriff's Office for their help and cooperation on this item. I think it's a, it just improves the partnership we already had with them. And this amendment will be helpful in getting these game room regulations implemented and enforced.
I'll speak to this. I'm appreciative of this work at the city and county level. I think that illegal gambling can come into play if these, if game rooms are not carefully watched and can be predatory and damaging to the financial security of our community. Gambling is illegal in Texas. And while developing creative ways to make enforcement of anti-gambling laws easier, I think is going to be helpful to ensuring that financial security and safety in our communities is maintained. So I appreciate everyone's work on this issue.
If I can just piggyback off of that as well, I also want to thank the county for their partnership and work with us on doing this. You know, I like, I'm sure so many of my councilmembers, you know, have a hard dislike for illegal gambling because they do seem to prey on especially communities of color and create this cycle of poverty that I think that is, is not needed. And so I'm really appreciative for our staff and the county staff as well, just to really attack and make sure that these, these game rooms are being monitored correctly and that they are being ran in a very reputable way. And so I just want to thank all of the partners and staff for all the work on this. I, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Council. Resolution 2020-412, this rejects all the bids on the Washington Avenue Improvement Project. The bids came in about $600,000 above our budget and we intend to change, adjust the scope and the specifications on this project and remove a couple of the items from the base bid and put them in alternates. One of the items would be the median barrier from University Parks to 11th Street. The base bid will include only striping and we'll look at the barrier as an alternate. The other alternate would be the loop detectors at the intersections that are, have traffic signals. We're also intending to use city staff to remove the signals at 7th and 12th Street so we can lower the, the, hopefully bring the base bid down on that and get it in budget. But we'll be bringing this back for a late summer 2020 bid.
I'll also, I'll also speak on this. I appreciate, this has been a long project coming. I think it's the right thing. It's good for the businesses on the Washington Avenue corridor. I think that it, we've had much public discussion on this. And I'm excited about us continuing to move forward and appreciate staff's commitment to ensuring that it happens and that figuring out a way to do it within budget. So I'm appreciative for staff's efforts and I'm excited to see this to the finish line.
Thank you, Council. Resolutions 2020-413 through 415 all have to do with Waco Transit. The first resolution, 413, authorizes acceptance of the federal grant for day-to-day operational funds. It's four and a half million dollars. At the local match, a 1.6 million. 414 is the Waco Transit Systems Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. And then 415 is a, an award, a contract with ACOM in the amount not to exceed, it's roughly $1.2 million to perform the Bus Rabbit Transit System Corridor Engineering Environmental Study. This is the first big step in a multi-part planning process of the BRT, moves the BRT forward, first major expenditure. Everything up until now has been mostly conceptual and it's, I, I think all of us are looking forward to seeing this take shape. Once we get the, the engineering and the environmental back, hopefully by the end of the year, then we'll be looking at the capital improvement grant request process. And I also wanted to mention as part of this that the Washington Street project is a critical component in the, in the BRT as is the Franklin Project and then the Fifth Street Project with the council awarded several meetings ago. And then next year, we need to bring in the Fourth Street Project. All of those being balanced downtown so that we don't have too much traffic disruption downtown and hopefully somewhere 2022, 2023, we'll see the BRT starts to take, the actual physical BRT start taking shape. So we're looking forward to, to all that activity, which will really improve our transit system and, and make the BRT, which I think was a dream a few years ago, a much stronger possibility.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's work on this. I mean, I think it is a, I don't know, a, an incredibly complicated, big and not cheap project that's going to require considerable resources, both now and down the road. But I think it, it could help transform our transit system and help really promote, I don't know, accessibility for a, a large part of our community that right now may have difficulty crisscrossing town. So I'm, I'm thankful for, I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm glad to see this kind of getting up and running. And you said, so we're, we'll, we'll allocate this and we'll get the engineering and study done. And then that'll be completed within, you said, nine months or six, nine months? And then we'll start doing the follow-up to actually start getting the stuff constructed?
Well, we'll be looking, we're looking at grant requests after that. And we intend to, as we ease into this study, probably about halfway through that, we'll bring you an update to give you a little bit better timeline and what's, what's we're looking at next.
Okay. And then just real quick on the 414, the one prior to that, I mean, we have, I think, A, the safety plan shows that we have a very good safety record in, in transit, which is fantastic. I'm just curious, since we're providing this document and getting it texted out, I mean, if we don't hit those targets, is there anything that happens or is it more of just kind of a learning and a, an opportunity inform, information wise to allocate resources going forward? I just want, I just want to know if, you know, we have, there are targets set in this document, if we don't hit those, if there's any consequences towards that?
We can get your report on that and exactly how that, how that will work.
Okay.
We, we might need, because it's been a while since we've had a really, a real discussion about BRT, it might be worthwhile to add it to a, a future budget audit so we can have a more in-depth discussion about that. So, Deidre, you're writing that down. Deidre's got it.
Allow me to echo Councilmember Canard in the urgent need, continual need for the BRT to happen in our city. As we look at how we realign the future of economic development for our people, it is imperative that we get, you know, increase the number of jobs that are in our, our inner core. But also if they're not there, and improve the transportation efforts to get people to jobs and jobs to people. And I, I know for a fact, BRT will do that for our community. And so I am appreciative of the transit staff and all the things that they're doing and looking to find alternatives and financial mana from heaven to make this happen because it is desperately needed within our community to get people moving through our city better and more efficiently than they are now. So, thank you all.
Thank you, council. There are three ordinances today. The first ordinance, 2020-417, is a first reading. This ordinance authorizes the use of Bradley Ford's facsimile signature as city manager on all checks, vouchers, and warrants. The remaining two ordinances are second readings. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments? All right. Are there any of the items on the consent agenda that council would like to pull from the consent agenda? Trying to get back to that. All right, seeing none, the consent agenda will include resolutions 2020-400 through 2020-416, with the exception of Resolution 2020-402, unless a comment card is received on one of the consent agenda items. And I will now turn it back to Wiley to introduce the next work session presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first work session item is discussion of planning public hearing agenda items. Clint Peters, Director of Planning and Inspections. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have the five public hearings. The first one, 395, is a vacation of a subdivision plat, the Cowan Village Edition Phase, I want C Lot 9, Block 1. This is a PUD residential development out off Ritchie Road in Panther Way that's associated with, this lot was associated with the new Ritchie Road Water Tower project that I believe is under construction now. Originally, we were working with a developer to purchase about a 1.5 acre lot, and that was a, a platted out by the developer. As we worked along further, it was determined that we didn't need that much land, needed about a little over a half acre. That actually worked better with the, the compatibility of the development. And so we just purchased the 0.6 acres that you can see on this map. So this, this action would vacate the, the lot in yellow and then we would plat this smaller piece with our lot where the existing tower is to accommodate the new tower construction. And a plan commission does recommend approval of vacating this plat. The next public hearing, 396, is a short-term rental type one request from Allison and Jake Roden at a property located at 4021 Austin Avenue. Type one is where the owners are in the home when their guests are visiting, owner occupied. So it's, it's different from the type twos that you normally see. This one actually, owners are onsite when their guests are there. This property is at the corner of 41st Street and Austin Avenue in our Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association. It's a section, the last street before you get to Waco Drive on Austin Avenue. The owner did, owners did reach out to a lot of their neighbors and we only received one card that had concerns, but the, the card did say they met with the, the owners, the applicants, and they addressed all their concerns. Other than that, there was no other opposition from the notices or the public hearing. Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 11 to 1. Here you can see the picture of the home. This is an Austin Avenue view. And then on the 41st Street side, there, there's actually a, a separate entrance into this bedroom and that's where, that's the room that they would rent out for short-term rentals. The next public hearing, 397, is a rezoning from M2 to C4 on a city block bounded by Elm and Taylor Avenue and then Douglas Brown and Peach Street in East Waco, about two and a half acres. The original application was City Center Waco on the portion of that block that they own. And city staff decided to expand that to include the whole block. This is the last block along Elm Avenue that has industrial zoning. And, you know, as that, as that corridor has transitioned to mixed-use commercial, this would complete that zoning for C4 along Elm Avenue. We did mail out 18 notices on this and had one returned back in favor. And here's, here's the block where you can see that there's a property on the corner, old service station, that's a commercial building, and then the vacant land that the City Center Waco owns. And then the, the Family Health Center, the Elm Avenue, Avenue Community Clinic makes up that block. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of that as well. The next request is a, at 1800 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard from Benji Gonzalez. This is a land use change from urban residential to mixed-use flex and to rezone from O2 to C2. This is about a four and a half acre property near the intersection of Herring Avenue. It's adjacent to the, the other Family Health Center, Community Clinic there at Herring and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, between there and then two apartment complexes, the Trenwood Apartments and the University Club Apartments. A vacant property. All that land is zoned O2 except for the clinic, which is C3, and they are requesting C2 zoning that would open it up for some more general commercial uses and then, and the, the existing O2 zoning, which just allows office and a multifamily residential.
Do, Clint, do we have any idea what they're looking to build here?
We, we do. They are looking at a use that needs commercial zoning that would not be allowed in the, the office zoning. So, so C2 allows general retail, office, and multifamily where the O2 just allows office and multifamily. And so it does, the C2 does open it up for some more commercial uses that would not be allowed in the O2.
And the, what's the closest C2?
There's C2, or there's, there's C3 zoning, which is a heavier commercial zoning right next door.
All around, yeah.
And then there's, yeah, there's some C2 zoning where the, the Manny, the Manny's Restaurant there, and then there's some C2 zoning up further on Herring Avenue as well.
Okay.
And then here's a picture of their property next to the clinic. You can see that, that kind of where their tree line is, is the, where the acreage is in between the clinic and the apartments.
I, I did bring my ask and I saw that Plan, you know, you'll, you'll explain that, what Plan Commission recommendation was, but I am very curious as to what, you know, because at the, a major cross, cross street within the district and I'm, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult to say, yeah, let's go change this until I know what it is that is going there or is intended for.
Sure. And, and one thing, you know, when we evaluate these zone change, we, you know, we have to consider everything that's allowed in that zoning district and not its specific use. So, you know, that, that is what we based our recommendation on is looking at the, you know, the laundry list of uses in C2.
I fully understand.
Yep. And then the, the last public hearing is a alley abandonment. This is a unbuilt alley in between Elm and Taylor and Myrtle and Factory Street along Elm Avenue. This is adjacent to the Brotherwell Brewery and the Bull Durham Building and, and the slab property where there's some vacant slabs. Like I said, that, there's a picture of it. The alley is not built. There is a sewer line in the alley, so we are asking to, to retain an easement for that sewer line, or they can relocate the sewer line out of that. And this picture looking the other direction of where that right-of-way is, but there, there's no alley there. And a Plan Commission recommended approval of that one as well. That's all I have.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, our next work session item is a discussion of the activities the Greater Waco Sports Commission proposed sporting events and use of events trust funds. I think we have Will Phipps online. He is the Executive Director, President of the Greater Waco Sports Commission. Welcome, Will.
Hello, city management. Thank you for having me today and council, appreciate your time. I'll just commend, as I've been watching this today, I'll just commend city staff for how well this is going. Online meetings are difficult to do and it's gone pretty flawless so far, so congratulations for that. I just want to take a few minutes to update you guys about the Greater Waco Sports Commission. And as you well know, we are a nonprofit here in Waco that is actively looking for new sporting events that would stimulate the economy and help improve the quality of life in Waco. And we are in our fifth year and only as strong as our Board of Directors and our team and partners will allow us to be. We have a very strong Board of Directors. Thankful to have our very own Jim Holmes, serving on the, Councilman Jim Holmes, serving on our board diligently. And so thankful to all of our, all of our Board of Directors who have a, each have a different role to play and they each do it very well. We added a new staff member this year. We hired Emily back in February, pre-COVID, and then unfortunately, due to the global pandemic, we just started her in, in June, on June 1st. So thankful to be expanding our team as we continue to grow and evolve. So, a, as you well know, we, the Sports Commission is actively soliciting and, and participating in business development for sporting events that could be happening in Waco. And so due to the global pandemic, that entire landscape of sports tourism and tourism as a whole is, is really struggled the last three, four, five months, and we don't know what that's going to look like going forward. This is, this was our planned schedule for the year as far as participating in business development conventions where we go and promote Waco on a national level. Usually at these types of conventions, you will do a speed dating type event where you go from table to table and meet with rights holders and events producers and share about Waco. That will no longer be happening. So we're still evolving and learning about what this new normal in sports tourism is going to look like. But I'm fully confident that with local leaders like Todd Burtka and, and many other partners here in Waco, that we are well-suited and positioned for a healthy recovery. That may take some time and I don't think anyone could accurately predict when, when things will be back to normal or what that will look like. But I feel confident that with the people here in Waco, that we will be working towards that very quickly. A lot of events in Waco have been canceled or rescheduled over the last several months. One of the silver linings that has come out of this global pandemic for us is the addition of the Laurel Herman Ironman Texas that was in the Woodlands in April. They were unable to host that event and so Ironman has rescheduled that event to Waco on the same weekend as our annual Bicycle World 70.3. So we will be the only city in Texas and actually in North America ever to have a full and a half on the same weekend. And so huge addition for Waco. And something like this is, is unfathomable without city services like Parks and Recreation, like police, like the CBB. So, so many people are going to have to come together and, and go above and beyond like they've shown that they can do in the past. And so that's why we're so confident that Waco can do this. And Ironman was confident Waco could do this because of the track record that Waco has in producing events through Parks and Rec and many others. And our community spirit in Waco is, is incredibly strong. Thousands of volunteers show up on a weekend for an event like this. And so just really excited for what this means for Waco and that we get to showcase our city to, to a whole new group of athletes. So we took the, there's a 15-page Economic Development, Economic Impact Study that was done in 2019 for the Woodlands event. And if you were just to look at some of those numbers, this gives you a general idea of what it meant to the Woodlands last year. Our registrations are down, as you could guess, but with the addition of the event, we're actually where we would be with this, almost the same number of people with just the, the half Ironman. So we're confident, the ceiling is now much higher on registrations. And so we're confident that the impact will be even greater for Waco over the course of that weekend. October is going to be a great month for Waco from, from a tax revenue standpoint with all, a lot of events being rescheduled to that month. And so thankful to have a really great weekend coming up. And again, without city services and city support on an event like this, it wouldn't even be possible. So very thankful for our partners at Parks and Recreation and, and, and many other places. So one, one of the, one of the other really great assets for sports commissions that has, I'm in a weekly Texas Sports Tourism Coalition meeting. And so sports commissions from all over the state meet weekly to talk about effects of COVID-19. And one of, one of our best assets is the Texas Events Trust Fund. And so we have some really great leads that are going to be utilizing the trust fund should we win the competitive bids. So I wanted to give you a brief update about that. And basically, I, I heard a really great phrase earlier called financial mana from heaven. So that's basically what this is. This is financial mana from heaven sports. And so this, this fund allows us to access tax gains that would be, that would not otherwise be here without the event. And so it's managed by the governor's office and there, there are events that would not happen in the state like Super Bowls, Final Fours without, without this, this incentive program. And we've used it before in 2018 when we hosted the, the Junior College Women's Tennis National Championship. Relatively easy to qualify for. You have to just meet a few criteria. Does it bring, bring people from outside the state? Is it a competitive bid process? And is it the only time that's going to happen in Texas? And so, so there are several events that we are working on that would qualify for this. I want to give you a few examples just so you can understand what that would look like if we were to win the bids. And these are hypotheticals. So just an example of events that have used this fund in the last, you know, six months, you can see here on the final fund amount that some of these events weren't able to happen due to COVID-19. But ranges vary from, you know, just a few thousand dollars, you know, all the way up to almost $2 million in incentive money that's available for these events. And the money can be used for any operating expense you may face in, in order to host the event. So conventions, anything from, you know, unique events like rodeo, water polo, you know, Battle of the Bands, anything like that. So we were actually a finalist to host the So we were actually a finalist to host the 2020 USA Crits. And at the last minute, El Paso, uh, came in and made a larger financial commitment than we could, uh, feasibly do. And so that's just one that we had planned to use for this year. And unfortunately, the bid went a different direction from us at the last second. It is a lengthy paperwork process like you can imagine from most state, uh, state incentive programs. So there's a lot of paperwork to be done by the Sports Commission, um, which is referred to as the LOC. Um, one of those, one of those documents that's relevant to the city, um, City Council would be this affidavit of endorsing entity. And so the, the Sports Commission or a city or municipality can fill out this form and endorse the Sports Commission to host events. And so that's something that Jennifer Ritchie and, and myself and City Managements have worked through several times and are, are very aware of this document. The, the economic impact statement, as you can see, see here, affidavit for economic impact is, is, uh, really key to determine how much is in your fund. And so this is an example of event that we're working on that we would have been hosting in 2021, uh, but due to COVID-19, we, they bumped that back to probably starting in Waco in 2022, should we be chosen. And so I want to give you an example of what that looks like. In their competitive RFP process, you take their projected numbers, um, and then you apply these, these metrics into the Economic Impact Calculator. And so this is the inputs page, the first inputs page that shows you the different, uh, variables. And then you just go through and it gives you the outputs, uh, based on each one of these tax revenue brackets. There are five different tax revenue brackets that would total up to give you the total fund amount. And so you look at different retail tax, hotel tax, different sales tax type, um, categories. And it's all dependent on the number of people from outside the state and, um, their projected spending. And it gives you a total number at the bottom of how much would be in your fund. And so, you know, a lot of these events would not be feasible without this incentive program. So for this example, you know, we could spend up to, uh, the total fund would be around 120,000. And, you know, you could spend up to a, a portion of that and I would pay the local match and the state would pay reimburses for those expenses. So really great program. There are several other leads like Rock and Roll Marathon that are applying for this fund to do events in Waco. Um, and so hopefully we'll have some announcements on those in the next six to 12 months, once things start opening back up like normal. So that, that's the quick conclusion of, of our presentation. I wanted to allow for a few questions, as awkward as that can be on, on, on a meeting like this.
Uh, this is Holmes. Will, great job on the presentation there. You know, it's my honor to serve as a council rep on the Greater Waco Sports Commission Board there. And Will's done a great job of getting the Waco name out there, not just, you know, in central Texas, but, and not just in Texas, but across the U.S. And, uh, very focused approach on sporting events, tournaments, marathons, as you saw here today. And, and some of the stuff I've learned on this, are these virtual sports and drones and electronics and stuff, they're, they're becoming more popular now. And I know that, that some of this, and Will can maybe comment on it, uh, some of these projects you're working on three and four years in advance just to get in front of the people. Cause a lot of times they'll have the, their next year's, uh, event kind of planned out, but you got to get on their schedule, you know, two and, two and three years ahead of time. And I know that Will's done a lot of work on, uh, getting some of that groundwork done for future years. But anyway, I just, I think Will's doing a great job. This is very worthwhile commission. And I think we have seen, you know, the studies that, that Will showed there, the heads and beds and that kind of thing and how we're actually, uh, the ripple effect of having these kind of events in Waco helps our tax base and helps our, uh, helps our economy. So Will, appreciate it. Good job.
Hey, Will, this is Hector. Uh, I also want to thank you for your presentation. Thank you so much for, um, data and the information that you provided. You know, I, I, I appreciate the, the economic impact numbers that you have provided. I, I think, uh, for me, I love to see the impact that we see, um, in our economy as you bring these events. And I, I even, I know how frustrating and flexible you have to be with COVID-19 and events that you maybe had planned for the summer and, uh, having to postpone those or cancel those, et cetera, things like that. So I really thank you, uh, for just hanging in there. I hear a lot of great things going on about the, uh, Greater Waco Sports Commission and your leadership there. So, uh, kudos to you and your team. I do have a, a, a fun question for you though. I mean, um, tell, tell, tell me about future events that you want to see that you bring to Waco that, um, we could possibly help you in securing those as well.
You know, I, I think that there are a lot of people in Waco who, who are suffering greatly due to COVID-19. And so sporting, sporting events is such a great outlet for people to get out, especially kids who, who were anticipating getting out playing this summer. They're not getting the chance to do that. So I'm excited to start seeing, uh, these summer tournaments come back online. You know, if you look at via Parks and Rec through, uh, Riverbend or the Tennis Center, um, HOT Soccer, you know, I, I want to see kids back out competing and playing because I know the, the values that I learned through sports as a child. Um, so that, that would be a priority is just to find ways to get kids back playing and competing again. Um, and then, and then the other thing would be to showcase our natural assets. You know, what, what can Waco do well that others, that others can't replicate? And we really want to try to focus on that area too and, um, find our niche and be great at that. So, um, there, there are so many people in Waco who are carrying heavy water on the sports tourism side. And we, we just happen to be one player in the, uh, at the table and, and we love supporting everyone locally who's, who's doing big things. It's a team effort.
Well, thank you again for that, you know, and, and I even appreciate, uh, you bringing in the, the topic about the Events Trust Fund. Um, I also heard that, uh, Katja saying, you know, fi- uh, financial manna, or I think that as my council member so eloquently put it, uh, but, but I think that, that's what it's going to take creative ways to look for opportunities to get money where otherwise we could not have these events. And so kudos to you once again for your leadership there, your staff. And, um, if there's anything that we can do on the city side to help you, please don't hesitate to reach out and make a phone call. Thank you.
What I love about the Sports Commission is that it's very easy to measure success. Um, you can really track what winning looks like. Um, and that's just, you know, by nature of what it is. You know, how many, by and large, how many attendees are probably coming? How many, uh, what does that usually translate to for hotel and restaurant entertainment? But what's harder to track about, um, the Sports Commission is how many people come to Waco for a sporting event and fall in love with our city and then come back again or might consider relocating to Waco. And I think that that is another asset that the Sports Commission, um, contributes to the community. Uh, so thanks for your work, Will, um, and carry on.
Thank you, Will, for this presentation. Um, I am an aunt of an avid, um, club volleyball player. And I know the amount of money and time my sister and brother-in-law spend on youth sports. And so that there is a dedicated effort to, to make, uh, uh, more of a, an intro, introduction to Waco from that perspective. And for other people to share how geographically perfect we are within the state of Texas and highlighting on all of the natural assets and resources that we have in the city is a boon that the Sports Commission has done. And I appreciate you for that. Um, I know how much money they spend and so I am encouraging, um, once we are, you know, uh, free of COVID-19 and things start moving and we are safe again to move about, that all of those people who are spending that money in other cities spend it here. Because that, you know, that's another, um, boon for our economy and, and allows more people to see who and what we are, um, just from different perspectives. People come to Waco for whatever they come for, but, um, they'll lead change. But, you know, if it wasn't for organizations and entities like the Sports Commission, I don't know that we would get that kind of, of audience. So I thank you for your work. We are, you said we were still, um, in line with where we were for our numbers last year for the Ironman, um, even with the pandemic.
We, our numbers are down for the 70.3, but with, with the addition of the full, we will be similar to the same and, and our ceiling is much higher.
Okay.
So. It, I think that over the course of the next two to three months, a lot of athletes are waiting to see what's going to happen. I think that number will grow significantly. It's encouraging. And a- along those lines of the volleyball, I agree. I, that's a huge market segment that we've missed for many years. And so huge congratulations to Wes Allison and Jason Elliott and the county team for getting that project open soon, uh, beginning of '21. Cause that is an, that is a huge missed opportunity for us and I can't wait to see teams coming to Waco to play in that facility.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Will, um, congratulations, uh, on the great job that you guys have been doing. Just getting the Ironman 70.3 here, uh, was, was a huge win for Waco and, um, has brought people to our city that, that would not have come, uh, to see our city had that not been held. And so I'm really excited about the full-length Ironman, just as an example of the things we're doing. And, you know, obviously the situation with COVID-19 is going to be very fluid and, you know, it's possible that those things won't happen this October, but I think, you know, we planned for them. And, uh, you know, this thing seems to be coming in waves and we're hit, getting the second wave now and it's bigger for us than the first at this point. Um, so, you know, we're going to have to be flexible and, and I know you'll work with our health district, our health officials to be sure that we're doing these things in a, in a safe manner when we have these, uh, events here in Waco. So thanks for all you're doing and appreciate the hard work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counsel and City Management. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Will.
Mayor Counsel, our next, uh, work session presentation is a discussion of police services, including crime statistics, recruiting, hiring, training, community engagement, use of force, accountability, and the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Uh, we have our Chief of Police and Assistant City Manager, Ryan Hope.
All right. Mayor Counsel, I'm here today to give you an update on the, uh, Police Department and to address discussion items surrounding policy, staffing, recruiting, and interactions with the community. Uh, the first couple of slides are going to be just to give some context for today's, um, conversation. The department is currently authorized for 260 sworn positions and right around 100 civilian support staff. The department is comprised of three divisions, which are known as Community Services or Patrol, Criminal Investigations, and then Support Services. Some quick stats for 2019. We received 379,000 calls to the Waco PD Dispatch Center. Of those, 243,000, uh, and a little more were administrative calls or calls to detectives for follow-up. Um, 135,000, um, 911 calls for service were, were received by the 911 Center, uh, for Waco PD and 104,000 or so of those were dispatched out to officers in the field. Of those 104,000 calls dispatched to officers in the field, 20,455 resulted in a police report with 2,239 felony arrests and 3,400 misdemeanor arrests. This slide shows the demographics of the sworn members of the department over time compared to national averages in law enforcement and in comparison to the city of Waco, uh, population as a whole. As you can see, we've been making slow progress in this initiative, but making progress nonetheless. Uh, the column titled BOJS 2013 is the Bureau of Justice Statistics Analysis of U.S. Police Departments in 2013, or the demographics in those departments in 2013. They have not done a study, um, since then. Additionally, uh, demographics by, uh, gender, as you can see, we continue to be above the national average and have been very pleased with the outcomes, uh, for, uh, female officers in the department and have been pleased with the, the outcomes that this has manifested within the department workforce. In conjunction with the national conversation on policing, we've seen a few different campaigns centered around policing tactics. One of the campaigns that we most often see in our mail, email boxes is the Eight Can't Wait Campaign. The department responded early on social media that the concerns identified in the campaign have long been addressed by the Waco Police Department. The first bullet point, uh, ban chokeholds and strangleholds. Uh, for more than 20 years, the Waco PD has not permitted or trained these types of restraints , uh, to gain submission or control. The second bullet point, requiring de-escalation. De-escalation is part of the culture and ongoing training for all department staff. The policy was developed in alignment with the 21st Century Policing Report and Concepts of Procedural Justice that ensures actions by our officers are proportional, legal, authorized, necessary, and ethical. The third bullet point is to require a warning before shooting. Our policy states that an officer should identify themselves and state their purpose that force may be used except in situations where doing so places any person at a greater risk of harm. The next bullet point, exhaust all other means before shooting. Our policy states we will only use the amount of force that appears reasonably necessary given the facts and circumstances of the encounter. A duty to intervene. Any officer that observes a person being mistreated in any way has a duty to intervene by verbal or physical means and must immediately report that to the department. A ban on shooting at moving vehicles. Shooting at vehicles is not permitted unless the person in the vehicle is attempting to use deadly force towards the officer or another person. Establishing a use of force continuum. Officers receive extensive de-escalation training and are taught to only use the amount of force that is reasonably necessary in response to a perceived threat. Require all force to be reported. All use of force incidents are documented and reviewed by a chain of supervisors, then analyzed by professional standards, the training unit, and the Chief of Police. Some of the conversation lately has been around identifying those items that law enforcement should be doing in the new century. In 2015, President Obama formed a panel selected from law enforcement officers and executives, community members, civic leaders, advocates, researchers, academics, and others to look at potential advances and reforms in policing. The Task Force recommendations, each with action items, are organized around six main topic areas or pillars. They are building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education, and officer safety and wellness. The Task Force made a total of 156 recommendations and action items. The 63 recommendations are followed with 93 actions that the Task Force sees as needed in today's law enforcement environment. Additionally, the Task Force also recommended that the President support programs that take a comprehensive and inclusive look at community-based initiatives addressing core issues such as poverty, education, and health and safety. The 117-page report provides a total of 156 recommendations and action items combined. Of those, 67 are identified as being in the purview of local law enforcement. 66 are assigned to federal authorities, 6 to public schools, 6 to the community as a whole, 5 to the licensing agency in each state, in our case, which is the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, 2 for the juvenile, juvenile justice system, 2 for local prosecutors to consider, and 1 for the states to consider, and 1 for academia. Of the 67 recommendations or action items, 33 are just recommendations and 34 are action items. I took the report and created an inventory matrix and then conducted an analysis of each item. That inventory, along with the link to the original report, will be sent to each of you by email after, uh, this presentation. 38 of the 67, uh, combined actions and recommendations are ongoing, completed, or substantially implemented in the Waco Police Department. In these, we will also continue to evaluate to ensure we are following best practices and meeting the expectations of our community. A couple of example items for the ones that have been implemented, such as Action Item 2.7.1, law enforcement agencies should, uh, policies should address procedures for implementing a layered response to mass demonstrations that prioritize de-escalation and a guardian mindset. Example of that is that, that is currently our practice, but we need to codify it into policy. The next one is 3.2.1. Law enforcement agencies should encourage public engagement and collaboration, including the use of community advisory bodies, uh, when developing a policy for the, for the use of a new technology. And a good example of that is our most recent, uh, body worn camera policy where we engaged several community groups, uh, to have input on, uh, that policy and its final outcome. 22 of the items could be done with either additional resources or policy development. A couple of examples in that category are, uh, Action Item 1.3.1. To embrace a culture of transparency, law enforcement agencies should make all department policies available for public review and regularly post on the department's website information about stops, summonses, arrests, reported crime, and other law enforcement data. Uh, the result is we do post stats on our website, uh, but however, to post our policies publicly, uh, we, we currently operate under a system of general orders which combines policies and procedures. And we would need to, uh, go through the general orders and separate out we would need to go through the general orders and separate out the policy from the procedures and publish the policies to the public. Additionally, Action Item 4.2.2, law enforcement agencies should evaluate their patrol deployment practices to allow sufficient time for patrol officers participate in problem-solving and community engagement activities. This action item would potentially need additional patrol staff, as that staffing issue is based on calls for service. Six of the items of the 67 for local agencies pose significant, or potential significant barriers like conflicting state law or a significant shift in policy or labor relations. An example would be Action Item 1.4.2, law enforcement agency leadership should examine opportunities to incorporate procedural justice into the internal discipline process, placing additional importance on values adherence rather than adherence to rules. That would require a change, potential changes in Texas Civil Service, state labor relationships, and case law, which make this one particularly challenging to implement. I'll describe civil service more in the coming slides. There are 121 general orders that combine policy and procedures that direct employees in the Waco Police Department. These general orders are in addition to city policies, state or federal statutes, local rules established by the Civil Service Commission, or the negotiated meet-and-confer agreements with the Waco Police Association. As a civil service department, we're governed specifically by Texas Local Government Code, Section 143. We also have a local civil service board made of citizens that serve in that capacity as commissioners. They are currently Enid Wade, Don Montgomery, and Francine Halliburton Francis. The commission administers Chapter 143, or what's known as the State Civil Service Statute, which includes establishing rules and regulations regarding hiring and dismissal of firefighters and police officers. The commissioners are appointed by the city manager and confirmed by the council. Different sections of 143 cover entrance exams, hiring, probationary periods, promotions, temporary assignments, various compensation components, specific requirements for discipline, the appeal process for discipline, including the use of a hearing examiner or local civil service board, demotions, leave, determination of physical and mental fitness, access to personnel files, suspensions, among many other aspects of employment of police officers. Coupled with portions of other codes and various judicial and administrative rulings, it also provides guidelines through which the Internal Affairs and investigative policy and process are formed. Waco PD accepts complaints from citizens or from employees within the department. Complaint forms are available on the website or at the front desk of the police department, both in English and in Spanish. Additionally, instructions on how to make a complaint or a compliment are printed on the backside of our citation forms as required by state law. Complaints are taken for anything that, if proven true, would be a violation of policy or law. We do not take complaints about the charge of traffic violations, for example. If you get a speeding citation and you don't think you were speeding, that is left up to the legal process at the municipal court. Once a complaint is received, the employee must be served in writing that they are the subject of a complaint and an investigation. If there is an allegation of criminal conduct, a separate and distinct criminal investigation is open by the department as well. In situations where criminal conduct is alleged, the employee is put on leave during the investigation and are prohibited from acting in a law enforcement capacity during that period. Anonymous complaints or complaints from citizens who wish for their name to be withheld are accepted, but they can only result in discipline if the department is able to find independent evidence of a policy or law violation. Once the employee has been notified of the complaint, the employee's direct supervisor is assigned to complete the investigation, except in situations where the allegation is about excessive or unnecessary force, an allegation of criminal conduct, racial profiling, death or serious injury of a civilian due to police actions, or significant occurrences that the chief determines should better be investigated by the IA sergeant or when two or more employees from different sections are involved. In those cases, the professional standards and conduct supervisor, also known as Internal Affairs, conducts the investigation. The IA sergeant reports directly to the chief so that no undue influence can be exerted on the investigation. Even in situations where the employee supervisor conducts the investigation, the IA sergeant is responsible for ensuring the investigation is thorough and complete. Once the investigation is complete, a determination can be one of five possible outcomes. The first is sustained. That is that the allegation is true and that the employee's conduct was inconsistent with rules or procedures of the city of Waco and/or the Waco Police Department or other laws. It could be not sustained, which means there is insufficient evidence to prove or disprove the allegation. It could be unfounded-
Which means that the alleged conduct or action did not occur. It could be exonerated, which means that the action complained of occurred, however, the conduct or action was lawful, proper, and in accordance with departmental rules and procedures. And finally, the investigation could be canceled, and that is if the investigation cannot be completed because the employee has resigned or died, the complainant refused to cooperate in the investigation, if that refusal makes it impossible to determine whether a policy violation occurred, or the chief of police determines that the investigation will discontinue or no disciplinary action will be imposed. Regardless of the findings, once the investigation is complete, each level of the chain of command must review the investigation, and if the allegation is sustained, they must each make a disciplinary recommendation to accompany the investigation to the chief. Due to civil service and labor statutes, the chief is ultimately the only person who can impose discipline. Before discipline is imposed, if there is a recommendation involving a suspension, the officer may respond in writing to the findings. They may also request a peer review board to review the investigation and the disciplinary recommendations, or they may request a meeting with the chief to discuss the investigation. All of the recommendations from the chain of command or the peer review board are advisory to the chief of police. If discipline is to be handed out, discipline can take two forms as a result of an IA investigation. They are classified as informal and formal discipline. Informal discipline can either be an oral reprimand, an oral reprimand that's documented in writing, or a written reprimand. Formal discipline can be a suspension of work time up to and including 15 days. Beyond 15 days, the chief can only impose an indefinite suspension, or under certain circumstances, the chief can issue a longer suspension of 15 days, but only if agreed to by the employee. Informal discipline cannot be appealed. Formal discipline, however, can be appealed to either the Civil Service Commission or to an independent hearing examiner. The rulings provided by the Civil Service Commission or the hearing examiner are binding, except in very narrow circumstances. Once discipline is imposed, the final memo to the officer in cases of formal discipline become public information and are placed in the officer's civil service file. All documents related to informal discipline are placed in a file that can only be accessed by the head of the agency or by court order. Because the IA process is our only disciplinary process offered under civil service, you find that the majority of investigations are a result of administrative issues, such as being late for work or operational issues, like backing a vehicle into a pole in a city vehicle. They also encompass more serious internal behavior, such as insubordination, violation of emergency driving policies, or failing to search a detainee thoroughly. Of course, the IA process also covers serious conduct, such as unnecessary uses of force, excessive use of force, racial profiling, untruthfulness, and other conduct that could be considered criminal in nature. Regardless of the allegation, the vast majority of these complaints are initiated by department personnel, holding our own employees to a higher standard. The graph on the screen shows for the last four years and the current year-to-date, the number of sustained complaints and the number of complaints that were closed out in one of those other categories. The range shows that in each of those years, the bottom end was an oral reprimand. In some years, the higher end was days off. In a couple of the years, an indefinite suspension was issued out, and in a couple of cases, employees resigned during the investigation. This graph shows the origination of the complaints. As you can see, the vast majority of complaints come from within the department, employees holding each other accountable, or supervisors initiating complaints against officers. And these are the sworn stats. These don't include our civilian staff. There was one anomaly in 2018. You can see there was a higher number of citizen complaints. When we looked at that, there was one incident involving six or seven officers where a citizen alleged improper, an improper search of a residence. That one was investigated very thoroughly, and was found to be unfounded at the time.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
So, back to that 2018 slide, you said there were six or seven officers indicated. So were there multiple people per case? Is that why it was 21?
Right. So, they had alleged that it was improper, there was an improper arrest, and they alleged that it was an improper search. And so, all those combined with seven people mean there's a higher number from a citizen than normal.
And for public information, were any of, any of the investigations I will take within the past four years, except the fourth?
Yes. And we, and we publish a report at the end of each calendar year that's put on the internet. So, I'll just go to the most current year, just to talk about that one as an example. So in 2020, there is a, I believe there is a use-of-force complaint that we got last week that is still under investigation. It's one of those three that's currently under investigation. In 2019, there was, I see one, excessive force made by a citizen. Two officers were the subject of that. At the end of that, they were exonerated of that conduct. I can keep going if you need me to.
No, I, I know that the, from what the reports that we've seen and read, the numbers have been historically low. I just needed the statement to be made.
Yes, ma'am. All right. And the next slide, we're going to talk about the officer's response to resistance. I just wanted to give a brief definition of force. Some, there have been some different definitions floating around on social media. Force is defined in state law as physical contact made with a subject to compel the subject to submit to authority for a search, detainment, arrest, or defend a person from an illegal act. This physical conduct may be made with a bodily contact alone or assisted with a device. And so, in, at the Waco Police Department, employees must document the following on a non-lethal force administrative report form and on offense and supplemental police reports. And that is when an officer uses one of the following. It can be a strike, a chemical agent, an impact device, an electronic control device, and that includes misses with those, with that device, or a canine bite. The completed non-lethal force administrative report form is attached to relevant offense reports and sent for review through the entire chain of command to the officer's assistant chief for review, and then the assistant chief determines final review of that incident and sends it to the chief. It's also reviewed by the Training Unit as well. We do document attempts to use force, not just the effective use of force. For example, if you look at the, the column with taser usage, in 2016, we had 12 misses. In 2017, we had 10 misses. In 2018 and 2019 each, we had five misses. And so even though the taser didn't, wasn't effectively used against a person, we do document the attempt to use that. You can see in comparison to the number of interactions that the police department has in the city each year, that the use of force is out to the second decimal place in percentages.
Hey Chief, just a couple of questions on that chart.
Yes, sir.
Defensive tactics and impacts. Talk a little bit about what those two things are.
So, impact are using like an ASP, expandable baton. We don't use the old PR-24 batons in the, like they did in the old days, but some of our officers do still carry the ASP baton, and occasionally, a, the blunt end of a flashlight can be used on pressure points to affect compliance. You can see from the numbers, that is very rarely used. Most officers have gotten away from any of those tools for impact. Defensive tactics are any, so there's two types of defensive tactics. There's soft empty hand and hard empty hand. So, a soft empty hand would not require a report, and that would be if I, if I grab your arm to handcuff you, that's a soft empty hand control tactic. However, if you resist, and I administer a strike to the common peroneal to gain compliance, we would document that on a, on a, on a phone, I'm sorry. Common peroneal is a, is a pressure point that, that you can use to gain compliance. It's a soft, soft tissue spot in your muscle group that if you use a, use a palm or an elbow or something to, to apply pressure to that area, it gets your attention in a hurry. So those are the two types of empty hand control, and so those are defensive tactics.
But just to be clear, that, that's not, you're not talking about the neck or throat when you're talking about the common peroneal?
No, 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 no. No, no restraint around the neck is, is permitted except in deadly force situations. And at that point in time, if you're authorized under state law to use deadly force, it's, it's pretty much anything you can use to defend yourself as a police officer and gain control of the suspect at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Chief, just to, just to piggyback off of that-
Sure.
-mayor's question. Am I to assume that by this, well, let me ask this, what is OC spray? I'm sorry.
So that's, OC stands for oleoresum capsicum. It's pepper spray, is all it means. It's-
Which is completely different from tear gas.
Absolutely. And, and there are two types of tear gas. I've seen this in the news. There is CN tear gas, and there is CS tear gas. CN has been outlawed for a number of years and has not been used by law enforcement that I've ever been around for, for decades. When I first got into law enforcement, I saw some old canisters of CN, and that is, that is the old-style military tear gas that was used way back when. Police departments, particularly in central Texas, moved to CS gas, which is essentially the pepper in, in the gaseous form, so that it, it's, it's an irritant that, but doesn't cause long-lasting damage.
And Waco PD does use CS gas?
We have CS gas in our inventory, but it's used in very specific circumstances under very controlled means.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that for me, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. So I'd like to move along to talk about recruiting and hiring and our efforts in, in that area. The amount of attrition lately is something that we've been dealing with. What we've seen is that in, from 2018, or 2015 and 2016, where we would have eight or so folks either leave through, either resigning or retiring or being asked to leave the department, we're now up to 15 or 16 a year. So that number has doubled for us. In 2020, we've already seen seven year-to-date for the calendar year. And so what we're seeing now is about a turnover of about 5.7% of the department each year. Just like we talked about civil service earlier, the civil service statutes guide our hiring process. We do give a civil service test. When we give a civil service test, we will provide training on how to prepare and take the civil service test. In fact, there's a study guide out on our, out on our website currently. We also provide a video on how to do the physical agility test and provide a time to practice before the day of the official test. We can only hire people that apply, and when, then we can only hire people in the order that they score on the test. So, and, but there is, there is a good thing in that civil service provides five extra points on the written test for military service that ends in an honorable discharge. The current negotiated meet-and-confer contract also allows us to hire police officers from other law enforcement agencies or who have been employed by such an agency within the last 12 months and left in good standing. And there is incentive pay for that. If you come from a police department in Texas and you have at least two years of service, we can start those officers at two- we can start those officers at two-year pay. If you come from the state of Texas or a city or county serving more than 50,000 people and have five years of service there, we can start you at five-year pay. We also have some opportunities for out-of-state officers who are willing to challenge the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Test, and we can hire them, we just can't start them out at higher rates of pay. For recruiting efforts, we have targeted advertising on Facebook and Twitter. We targeted those by demographics and location, although we're being told now that Facebook is changing their rules so that you can't do any targeted advertising related to housing, employment, or credit by location, age, gender, or race. Due to, I know that Councilmember Meek had suggested we use Snapchat. Unfortunately, Snapchat offers some challenges in capturing those posts for open records, and so, at least at this point in time, we're unable to use Snapchat. During the last recruiting efforts, we ran 30 to 40 spots a week on KWB-TX in different segments. We ran it on TV Fox 44. We ran radio spots on 104.9 Bob FM, 104.1 La Lay, Power 108, and 94.5 The Beat. I challenged my staff to get into schools that we hadn't previously worked at and historically black universities. They quickly told me that schools don't have newspapers anymore. They're online. And so, we placed web-based ads and publications at Prairie View A&amp;M, Paul Quinn College, Grambling State University, and additionally with the T-Cole website, which goes out to individuals looking to go into the police career. We also placed site visits, and with universities, it's difficult sometimes to match up their recruiting and job fairs with our cycle of hiring. Our cycle of hiring has to fit with the MCC Academy because that's who runs our regional academy. And so, the timing doesn't always line up that we can get to everybody's job fairs, but we did most recently complete visits to Sam Houston State University in Huntsville, Charlton State University in Stephenville, MCC at Waco, La Vega High, Connolly High School, and we also made site visits to San Antonio and Corpus Christi. In addition, we went a little bit outside of our normal scope this past time and placed targeted billboards in the DFW Metroplex, trying to get sworn officers when we saw some dissatisfaction with agencies in the Metroplex area. We also ran a Work for Waco commercial at the local cinemas at PG-13 and below movies.
But, Chief, before you move on, in recruiting efforts, one, I would never forget Houston Tilletson right down the street in Austin.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm curious, so like I know with, you know, my husband's in education, so with the Texas Association of Black School Educators, you know, they have alliances and groups, and I assume that black and brown officers have some sort of coalitions. You know, when they have conferences, has anyone considered going to them and recruiting at those types of, the women officers, all of the things that separate out the demographics that we are, you know, intentionally recruiting for equity purposes? You know, have those efforts been made in that manner?
No, but those are fantastic ideas, and I've made notes here. Sometimes, some of the other business organizations or constituent organizations, sometimes they feel like we may be trying to poach their employees, and so, we have to be a little careful about that, but I'm willing to poach, so we will certainly give it a try.
I'm sure with those organizations, they have events, you know, that go to, and, you know, you just belong to the organization, one, and in that way, you know, if an ad book or something should happen to pass through at an event, it's just a flying W that's amazing that says, "Why not?"
Yes, absolutely. I do, when various law enforcement organizations are having their conferences here in Waco, and I've been asked to give keynote addresses, and I always leave my card and tell folks we're hiring, so I'm not afraid to poach officers at all from that.
Before I let you pass on this effort, when you said the academy cycles, we're making sure that the job fairs match up the academy cycles. How many cycles are there in a year, and are they set?
Yes, ma'am. So, typically, the MCC Academy starts in January and July. And so, what we have to do is we back up about 12 months before each one of those dates. We sort of work backwards, and we figure out when we can give the civil service test, and then there's about six months of hiring process. I think some of y'all may have heard me talk about the fact that both Waco High and University High and La Vega and some of the other local schools have criminal justice programs in the high schools, and they are tremendous groups of kids that are interested in law enforcement, but we lose them from the time they turn 18 till the time they turn 21. Life happens, or they go decide to do something different. And so, we have been working over the last couple of years, and we've talked to MCC about things that we can do to engage those kids in that interim time period. As a matter of fact, I think in the officers I introduced earlier, we got one of those kids from La Vega, and so, he had been in the criminal justice programs over there. He's, two of our folks in that academy turned 21 in the academy, which is very unusual for us. We typically like to hire folks that are a little older, have, you know, plenty of life experience and wisdom and discernment on when to use that wisdom, but they, both of those kids, and I say kids, they're all younger than me at this point, but both of them were just outstanding individuals and had really done the groundwork and were very mature for their age. One of them was from Waco, and the other one, but their families were, you know, had just provided outstanding stability for them, and we were fortunate to get them at such a young age. So, we absolutely are going to continue all of our efforts with our local school districts as well.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to highlight our ongoing training efforts as well. In the academy, recruits get several hours of ethics, multiculturalism, and human relations. And one they've had to add for the newer generations, communication and problem solving, or how to talk to people. All of that is included in the academy. What we're seeing is, particularly with younger individuals that have only grown up with smartphones, is that they're used to texting, and so, we engage them a lot in scenario training, just how to talk to people in a way that encourages folks to get along, and all that's included in the academy. But then, the department also conducts a number of the following classes for both the new officers that come out and our officers through their career. That includes follow-up training on implicit bias, civilian interaction training, de-escalation training, interaction with deaf drivers, cultural diversity, a 40-hour crisis intervention class, and others, among others, like human trafficking as well. Additionally, I've had the opportunity to participate in the Race Equity Institute training locally. We have worked with the Cooper Foundation and the Waco Foundations, and we're working our way through the entire executive staff and command staff at the Police Department. And I've also had extensive conversations with Ashley at the Cooper Foundation, and she knows that I'd like to get through all 37 sergeants through that training as well. Of course, they try to maintain a balance in those classes, so it can take a little while to get everybody over there. However, our sergeant over our Crimes Against Children unit has already attended that training. In addition to the REI training, I think y'all are aware that I took some of our staff out to San Jose to look at a training program in San Jose that really focused in on the policing in America and what it means to put on the badge and the uniform and what it means to the different groups and different populations that we serve, because that uniform means something to different people, and it talks about how police have been used by governments to adversely affect communities of color. Because of COVID, I had originally wanted to try to get that rolled out to our folks coming out of the July academy. Due to COVID, we're backed up a couple of months, but we're working with one of the staff members out at San Jose, just to make sure there's no issues with their curriculum and our curriculum. Ours is going to be much more centered on Texas and Waco in particular. As y'all know, there's plenty of material there for Waco and Texas to talk about in that class. In addition, Mr. Ford has engaged us to look at that program potentially for other city employees to expand it across the city to share that information. We try to host additional cutting-edge training for all central Texas law enforcement. In September, this September, we're going to host a class called Understanding Human Performance in Critical Incidents, and so, we're always trying to look for new things that allow police officers to identify how they operate in very stressful situations. From a social media standpoint, our Facebook page has 55,900 followers. We have 23,400 followers on Twitter, and our interim Public Information Officer, Garen Bynum, is restarting our Instagram page. For community outreach, in 2019, the Community Outreach Section presented 244 crime prevention and education programs, reaching just under 20,000 citizens. We hosted our 55th and 56th Citizens Police Academy and our 8th Junior Police Academy, involving a combined total of 65 citizens and students. We were really disappointed that due to COVID, we couldn't host the Junior Police Academy this summer, as that's a highlight for our students and frankly, for the police officers that are involved in teaching that class. We also conducted the annual Red Ribbon Week anti-drug message involving local county, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, which was presented to six area county schools involving 3,000 elementary students. As you know, the City of Waco Police Department placed 15th nationally in our promotion of the National Night Out Event. The Citizens Police Academy and the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, Citizens on Patrol, and Police Chaplains all volunteered contributing 6,000 hours to the Waco Police Department. One of the things I'm really proud of is that our Blue Santa program, supported by officers and the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, was able to provide food, toys, and personal items to over 100 families during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays of 2019. Before COVID, we conducted a number of Coffee with a Cop programs. We host and participate in numerous panels and special interest group discussions. Our staff, particularly the executive staff, serve on various boards and community groups. We also have additional opportunities with ride-alongs. We encourage citizen ride-alongs. The Citizens Police Academy is a highlight, I think, and Citizens on Patrol. And then, of particular interest is our Victim Services Volunteers. We provide response to the scene, and our volunteers support our actual employees at that. They respond to the scene of violent crimes and provide assistance to the victims and their families. And now, any discussion that council would like to have?
This is Holm's, Chief Holm, thanks for the presentation, brilliant presentation. I appreciate your comments, and not only today, but your statement in response to the Floyd incident from a couple of weeks ago is also right on point. You know, it's such an important topic right now, community policing, community outreach, the mutual trust and the mutual respect that you build with the community. You know, it's not easy, and it can be, you know, very fragile at times, but I think we've set a good foundation here in Waco. When this eight-cat-weight policy discussion came out, I wasn't as familiar with each of the eight, and so, I was frankly, you know, a little anxious that our department wasn't following each one of those, and that was followed by, you know, relief, you know, happiness and pride, I guess, that we, the City of Waco and our department is leading in those policies. The one thing that kind of pops out to me in the current environment, particularly as you talked about excessive use of force and unnecessary use of force and racial profiling in particular, are there, and I know a lot of this information has to be confidential, some level of transparency or some level of consistency, and I'd like your comments on how our department, and I know you've commented some already, but just how our department, that's very important to us as a city, as a council, and as a department, that we, that if those principles are violated, that there is consequence. So, I'm going to ask two questions, and I'll just cut off the listen. The other one, is this the mental health aspects? How much of policing is kind of morphing into mental health sort of management and maybe less so on that? If you answer one of the two, the former, is what I'd like to hear about. Thanks, Chief.
Sure. Yeah, so to your question about consequences, and I've had that question on some radio shows, and some reporters ask me that question, you know, they'll say, "Well, you can have all the policies in the world, but what happens if people violate those?" And unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way you look at it, it turns out we are humans to wear the badge and the uniform, and unfortunately, sometimes they do make mistakes. And I think we have a long history of high expectations set by previous chiefs, and I hope that I've continued that on. And where that leads you to is that sometimes you have to not only impose a little discipline, but sometimes you have to ask folks to leave the organization. And in serious matters, you have to take, we have to hold ourselves accountable, and we have arrested our own officers. We have, I've given out indefinite suspensions, and unfortunately, we have also arrested our own officers. That is a very low day in my career when that occurs, but at the same time, you have to do what's right, and we have to take pride in the badge that we put on and in the patch that represents the Waco Police Department. I said this out loud to our 12 new officers at their graduation the other day, that the profession, the integrity of the profession and your name and the integrity of the Waco Police Department are too important. We have to hold each other accountable, and sometimes that means that people no longer can be in law enforcement, and unfortunately, it also means that sometimes we have to arrest our own officers. So, I feel like that we have a strong history of consequence. Now, I will tell you that we try to be thoughtful and methodical, and we try to be fair, and we don't seek retribution. We seek fairness and justice in all of those processes. We try to be very thorough in our investigations, and we try to consider all of the issues at hand, particularly with civil service. One of the things that the independent hearing examiners want to know is if the chief, number one, has been thoughtful about the investigation? Has it been thorough and complete? But has the chief been fair and equitable and disciplined recommendation? And has the chief been consistent? That's one of the challenges in civil service, is that they want the chief to be consistent across the board. I will be honest, that's a little challenging for me, because on one hand, the labor unions will always say, "Well, this officer, you know, you shouldn't treat this officer as harshly because they have a 30-year career." But then, in the next time, they'll say, "Well, you know, this one-year officer who did this, you have to treat them exactly the same as the 30-year officer." And I've said that out loud to the labor unions, and they acknowledge that, but it is just part of the process. It is frustrating for a chief that you can't employ some procedural justice even within the department because of the box that you get pushed into from civil service. So, there are some challenges there, but I feel like we have a strong reputation for consequence when something is done wrong. Mental health is a huge subject. I think some of y'all have heard me sort of yell from the mountaintops before about mental health and its challenges that it poses to local law enforcement. We get, on average, I think it's more now because we had a 36% increase in the last year of mental health calls, but we get about three to four mental health calls a day of somebody in crisis, where they've gone beyond normal intervention by a family member or a medical personnel. So, police are called in. by a family member or a, or a medical personnel. So police are called in. Inevitably, at least one of those a day ends in a detention. It's a very narrow scope of authority that's given to us in the Civil Code, where we can take a person against their will and take them for an emergency detention for an emergency mental health evaluation. And those calls typically last several hours. Sometimes they last several days before officers can be relieved and turn that person over for long-term treatment. So that is a very challenging issue. Those calls for service have bypassed. In the old days, we used to say that domestic disturbances were the most dangerous call we went on. Now, it's easily mental health crisis calls for a number of reasons. The first is that there's no culpability for mental health folks. They often don't mean to hurt the officers or to hurt their family members. It's not their intention. They don't have any, they can't form that kind of thought. But it still hurts nonetheless if you get hit by somebody, just because they don't have any culpability. And somebody with no culpability can still kill you nonetheless. And so, it's very challenging for officers. The other thing is that officers are expected to get on scene and diagnose people, because people with different DSM-5 diagnoses and comorbidities, you should treat differently than people with other diagnoses. And officers, you know, people have PhDs and masters in, in mental health, and officers are expected to analyze those situations in very often difficult situations, often in the middle of the night, and determine the best course of action for the safety of everybody involved, including the mental health consumer. So those are very challenging cases and, and an opportunity, I think, for our community and community resources, both medical and government, to work together, just like we are with the Behavioral Health Leadership Team. The mayor serves on that, the county judge, and the CEOs of both hospitals and MHMR, and they're doing fantastic work trying to get grant funding. But the, the reality is that the state and federal systems have defunded the number of beds available for these mental health consumers that get into crisis, year after year after year. And when nobody else can solve it, the, the public calls the police department and expects the police department to solve it. You know, there are opportunities like the Colorado Springs model, which would place law enforcement with mental health providers and medical personnel to go out and try to keep mental health consumers before they go into crisis. So keep them on their medication, keep them going to the doctor, keep them stabilized, keep them as productive members of our communities, and so that they don't get into crisis and don't cause harm or potential for harm for their families and/or police officers. One thing that sort of I get, I bristle at a little bit, is in the national discussion, they say that, well, police are just putting these people in jail. And what I've seen is that for a number of years, particularly in central Texas, because that's my perspective, is that we have, for a number of years, sought to not put people with mental health issues in jail. And frankly, and in the state of Texas, in two legislative sessions ago, the Sandra Bland Act actually prevents us from doing that. The McClinney County Jail is doing extensive work at the McClinney County Jail for mental health. And so, that is a huge topic, and it certainly continues to be a challenge for our officers on a daily basis. And, and I believe it's an opportunity for us to divert that away from law enforcement. I don't know of a single police officer that would disagree with that. And so, that is a huge opportunity for us. Councilman Holmes.
Thank you, Chief. That's all I have.
I'll jump in here. Chief, thank you so much for the presentation. I would like to start off by saying, first and foremost, congratulations on your 12 students that have just graduated. One thing that I was so proud, as you were acknowledging them and recognizing them, is the diversity that came along with this class, not only a race background, but also a gender background. And so, I really have to congratulate you on that. It is a representation of the community that we and they serve, and so, I was so proud to see that. So I want to say thank you for doing that. You know, I thank you for going through the procedures and policies that the Waco PD has implemented for years, including the eight can't wait. You know, I have, I'm very proud to see that Waco PD is years ahead because of the groundwork that you and Waco PD has done with the NAACP, the Local Chapter, the NAACP, the Local Chapter, LULAC, and the groundwork that has been done. There is a great rapport and a great respect for Waco PD, and that things are done fairly and equitable. And, you know, it just, it just shows your leadership with the police department over the last few years. And so, I have to congratulate you on that. But that also has, as a council member, has really encouraged me that Waco is ahead of other cities, even cities that are two, three, four times larger than Waco, but yet we're still ahead of them as far as, you know, procedures and protocols that we have banned and that we allow here. And so, you know, the chokehold and the neck restraints that we do not, the DSD situation where one officer has to report another one when, when there is physical abuse taking place. And so, I just really want to thank you for that. I also want to commend you for yourself and some of your sergeant and your leadership team that's going through the Race Equity Institute training. Very beneficial. I think it's a powerful thing when you, as a leader, tell your rest of your team, I'm doing this to make us better and to better serve our community, and the people, the people that serve underneath you are falling in line with us. So I really have to congratulate you on that. I thank you for addressing and attacking the, the, the mental health need that we have in our community. And in spite of still everything that's going on, you know, not only here locally, but around, around the country, there's still a mental health component of, of our community that, that we are still all looking to see, how do we address this? How do we, how do we combat this? How do we help our neighbors, our community, our constituents do this? And so, even that you're addressing this and the work that's taking place, I really have to commend you on that. So, Chief, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you for, for investing in the community and investing in relationships. It brings me joy to see Waco police officers at neighborhood association meetings. It brings me joy to see Waco police, Waco police officers at the local high schools trying to recruit. I mean, we have some very, very capable and talented young adults here that are graduating high school, that are graduating college, and for them to join Waco PD, I think that says, that speaks volumes. And so, I really just want to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for, for what's taking place. Thank you for the groundwork, groundwork that, that has been laid. And the only thing I will end with this is, you know, you were talking about the 22 local recommendations that could be done and possibly see how we can implement those. I would love the opportunity, whether it's through an informal report or, or a conversation with you, to see how we can implement those here locally as well, because I'm at your recommendation, of course, and, and see how we can just become better at what we do. But, but overall, thank you so much for, for just the work that you've done here in our community. It is, it is very, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman. I will say that it's all possible because we have a lot of really good men and women that work for y'all in the Waco Police Department. And they do it on a day-to-day basis. They make every interaction. They're, they're putting money in the bank of trust with our citizens. They know that that's the expectation, but, but they're out there doing it every day, and they're doing the hard work, and I appreciate every one of them.
I'll jump in. First, I want to set the record straight. I don't, I'm not saying I didn't say it, but I don't ever remember saying anything about Snapchat.
[laughing]
I don't have Snapchat. I've never had Snapchat. Can you say something about Instagram? I don't know. It's probably if you're taking minutes.
[laughing]
Good correction. I said Instagram and not Snapchat, but you can remember that. Hey, I'm so thankful for our force and you, Chief. I think being an honorable officer is noble and hard work. I have so much respect for you. In this report, we've been able to hear, as you, as Jim mentioned, as your statement reflected, the thoughtful approach for policy that you've created. And I'm proud of where we are. I know that, like all institutions, there's always things that we can do to get better. And I know that you, as our chief, and our police force and our council is committed to evaluating all of our systems to see where we could get better. One thing that I'm thankful this council did, and thankful that you came to us with the recommendation, was the body worn cameras. How, how is that, you mentioned that in your presentation, but how is that going? How are you feeling about that? What are some of the success stories that have come?
Sure.
From that?
I, you know, I'm a little biased, but I think it's been fantastic, actually. And it was, it was adopted by the officers in a fantastic way. Some of the things that I warned about unfortunately have come to fruition, and we had a deadly use of force that occurred in the 1400 block of Spate, where the officer got out of her car, and the suspect was stabbing the hotel manager, trying to kill the hotel manager. And so, she had to use deadly force immediately and was not able to turn on her video camera or her body worn camera. And so, that was an example to us that there are going to be times when, when body worn cameras, you know, because they, you can't allow them to run for the entire shift. State law prevents us from doing that. And she had to take care of the safety of the, of the person that was being stabbed to death, or trying to be stabbed to death. She had to intervene on his behalf quicker than, you know, she couldn't be concerned about turning on a body worn camera. Some of the success stories, there are just so many of them that show the great interactions of our officers with our public, because it's, they're, they're on for most interactions. And so, you just get to see the good that our officers are doing. We've been able to see our officers do special things for citizens, like buy them gasoline or buy them food, or intervene in those ways, in addition to working regular calls for service in just tremendous ways. But one of the things it has done that pleased me was that it has allowed us to rebuke false accusations against our officers. I had one story I'll share with you, because it was so sort of outlandish to me, was that I had two, I don't know if I'd say elderly ladies, but they were very mature, called to complain about one of our just really fantastic officers, who happens to be African-American. And he went on a call for service and just did a tremendous job, was very polite. And these two mature ladies came and complained to the Internal Affairs Department that he was rude and wouldn't help them. And so, we invited the ladies down to watch the video of the interaction, and at the end, they said, well, we've seen that, but that's not how we remember it. And so, I was, I was a little dumbfounded, and I, and I just asked them, I said, well, what, what would you like me to do? And, and ultimately, they said, well, I guess we were wrong, and they left. And so, there are those opportunities. You know, we, we talked about that when we were getting these cameras, that this would be accountability for our officers, but it's also accountability for our public. And I think our officers see that, particularly for those men and women who go to work every day and they try to serve the community in the best way they can, they, they see that that camera is capturing those interactions. Now, one thing I'll warn against is that frankly, there isn't a single use of force that looks good on camera. And so, we have to be very careful when we are reviewing those, that video, that we look for appropriateness, and we don't necessarily cast our own opinion about it in the light of day, that we have to take into consideration all of the factors that the officer was having to make decisions at split seconds, sometimes in the dark of night, in, in very hazardous conditions. And so, sometimes, we, we have to remind ourselves when we're reviewing that, that video footage, that there's, there's no use of force that looks good. And so, we look for appropriateness. But I couldn't be more pleased, and I couldn't be more thankful that y'all, as a council, and that our management were forward-thinking enough to recognize the value of, of body worn camera systems. I think it has been a tremendous service to your department and to your community.
Well, that's great to hear. Why does state law prohibit, you mentioned state law prohibits having them all the time? Why does it?
I would never guess to get in the mind of a legislator, sir.
Yeah. One thing that I read in your statement, you mentioned that there's policy checks to make sure that, that, in other words, I think supervisors go and make sure that, to the extent possible, those body worn cameras are being turned on when they're supposed to be.
Yes.
What does that look like?
So sergeants are required to watch a particular, or a percentage of the body worn camera, and frankly, in-car cameras. You know, we've had in-car cameras since the early 2000s. Y'all were very, the council was very progressive on that as well. And, and we, when we rolled out body worn cameras, you know, we started off with, hey, don't forget to, to turn your cameras on. But we have had some sustained Internal Affairs complaints when officers have failed to turn on their cameras. And every time when we review the situation, inevitably, somebody else's body camera caught it, and you could see that there was not an intention to, to not capture the event. They weren't trying to do it willfully, but nonetheless, it goes to holding our folks accountable. And so, we, for the most part, we have good, good adherence to that policy of turning those cameras on.
Another question I had was community policing opportunities. I know, one thing that I'll commend you, Chief, and your staff to, if there's a meeting that you're asked to participate in, you're there. I've seen you at all hours of the night, weekends, weekdays. Thank you to your family and your kids, because you are a very, you attend meetings, you attend groups when you're asked to be there. And I appreciate that. Are there, are there any additional, and so, you know, community engagement, I, you're very present. Are there any opportunities for increased community policing whereby our officers, our beat officers can get to know the citizens of our city well, and somehow build a relationship because of frequency in a neighborhood or something like that? Is that, is there any opportunity for that? Or what is that? Is that a good trust-building mechanism even, maybe, is the right question?
Yeah, I think, I think when people look back on neighborhood policing or community policing, they look back to the programs we had in the, in the late 90s, where we had officers dedicated to neighborhood associations. And the reality of that is, it is, it is labor-intensive. And so, you know, when you, it's a balance that you have to play on, on resources. But I know that incoming manager, Ford, has asked us to look at the potential cost of neighborhood police, or neighborhood officers. There, you know, it just comes down for the patrol officers, it comes down to not enough hours in the day between calls for service. You know, at the beginning, I talked about the fact that we answer over 100,000 calls for service a year. And, and that, what that really turns out to be is that our officers are, patrol officers particularly, are going call to call throughout their shifts. And while they love to engage our community, and I've actually caught some flack at community meetings, because they'll say, hey, you know, it's good to see you, Chief, but where are your troops at? And, and my response is, well, they're, they're out answering 911 calls. 911 is great when you need a police officer, but, you know, if you talk to Assistant Chief Ginch, who was around before 911, he will say that, you know, back then, you had more time, because not, you know, now, everybody has a phone, and so, every call is an in-progress call, and everybody wants you there immediately, and you may get 15 calls for each incident that's going on, because everybody's got a cellphone. So those officers would love to have, have an opportunity to engage citizens. They love that. And I think you've seen that at some community meetings, and they, and most of all, they love talking to kids and getting with the kids in the neighborhood. So there are always opportunities. I think it is a, just a balance that we have to take when we look at all the competing priorities in the budget, and, but it is certainly something we're looking at. And Mr. Ford has directed us to, to get, to look at what that would look like for the Waco Police Department.
Next question. Did you just call Chief Ginch old? Is that what that?
Well, Chief Ginch is seasoned, for sure.
Mature. Okay. The, what is, what are the things that you're hearing in the community? First, thank you. I get that that's a balancing act, and I do think that- I give that that's a balancing act and I do think that it is something we need to consider. And I know that, that, you know, we can't do everything we want, but I think it's worth examining that. Are there anything else that you're hearing in the community that you think that we need to, to adjust or mend or implement now?
Well, I think, I think there are always opportunities. We know folks in our community are very generous with suggestions and advice for the police department. And interestingly, one of the biggest topics I get is traffic enforcement from, from various districts. Traffic enforcement, we, in addition to traffic enforcement, we seem to have an ongoing issue of discharge of firearms calls. And I get a lot of feedback from members of the community, but we, our detectives and our patrol officers work diligently on those discharge of firearms calls. I just received a report in my inbox today with another 20 or 30 that we're tracking. We have arrested suspects. Unfortunately, because of COVID, folks get out of jail pretty fast and that's part of the criminal justice system we don't have any control over. And so there are, there are opportunities out there. You know, we are very lucky that we are receiving the state grant for the anti-gang center. And so I think once it is up and running, I just went day before yesterday and looked at the construction at that. And so we're, we're moving along. We've, have formed the advisory board with Texas DPS and the McClaney County Sheriff's Office so that we're going to leverage the other agencies' resources here in Waco. We're all going to work together on those gang issues. Obviously narcotics are still a, an ongoing issue that we get a lot of feedback on. Unfortunately, in 2020, we still have some open air drug markets and I get a lot of demand for that. The, the thing is, I also want to be very careful that we don't create a police state where you see a police officer on every corner and every park. The way we displace some of that out of parks as the, the, the wise Noah Jackson told me one time, the way you, you get, you get folk, bad people out of parks is you put good people in parks. And so we have some opportunities and for community outreach, I'd like to, to work with our parks department about putting some of our interim summer programs in the parks. I've talked to Director Jonathan Cook about that. Since we, we can't do some things because of COVID and we're going to do some what they call recess is their program is doing some of that in our parks. So not all of these issues that, that are, that are criminal justice or crime related can be solved by police. There are a lot of these issues we can't arrest our way out of. And so we have to be thoughtful about things we do in the community related to economic development and programs and a lot of these things. And we have to get our, we have to get our neighborhoods involved in being part of the solution. The neighborhoods who have had the most success in displacing crime are those neighborhoods who just get fed up with it and decide they're not going to put up with it anymore. And we partner with them and bring forces to bear where we can. And we displace crime for the long term out of those, out of those neighborhoods. And so it's going to take all of us working together to do that because we, we just can't arrest our way out of all these issues.
I completely agree with that. And I, the last thing that I want to emphasize is I think that as we continue to have community conversations about this subject, one thing that's really important is communicating where we are now so that as we discuss this, the community can know where we're sitting and go from there. It's funny how many emails I've gotten this week that have requested policy implementations for policy that have been implemented for over a decade, which is encouraging in some ways, but I think also the conversation and hopefully trust, the conversation is more productive and trust is, is more established when we know where we are today and can, and can move from there. So I would just encourage continued efforts to communicate that. I know we're doing everything we can to do that, but just emphasize continually exploring what that could look like in innovative ways to make sure that the community knows where we stand. So I'm sure this will be a conversation that we could keep having for a while, but that's all I have for today and look forward to continuing to discuss. And again, thank you, Chief, for who you are and the department you've built.
Thanks, sir.
And I'll just, pretty much everybody's asked the things that I was curious about. So I'll just reiterate all of that. I appreciate your, excuse me, thoughtful responsiveness, not only over the events of the past few weeks, but just as you've, in your role as Assistant Chief and Chief and just since I've known you. I mean, it's in our, our police force takes their cue from their leadership and you have demonstrated just a respectful, mindful, thoughtful and, and right way of approaching this. So, so I just want, I do, I want to just echo what everyone said, I appreciate you. And I agree that we can't arrest our way out of all of this. And, you know, we've had discussions over the mental health issues. And, you know, you said they accounted for, I believe, one third of your calls for service?
Well, every day we get, we get three calls and we've had a 36% increase over the last, each year for the last three years in those calls.
Still, it makes a, a large component of the issues that your officers have to address. And so I think as we continue going on, working towards greater equality and understanding that law enforcement is only one facet of the inequality in our systemic institutions. But is, but here, thanks to your leadership and thanks to leaders that came before is in a much better place than, than other parts of our country. So I just, I want to commend y'all. I want to say thank you. I want to say I think we're approaching this in the right way and, and continuing working on the, on the mental health and other issues, I think is, I think could be, be very productive in, in moving ourselves forward as a community.
Thank you, sir.
You're on mute, Councilor Barrio.
I thought I hit it, sorry. Thank you so much for your report and everything that, your dedication to this city and your, your staff and making sure that we haven't had to personally bear the brunt and burden that many cities have recently. And we attribute that to the dedication that you serve with. It is imperative right now that we all stop and remember and pause for a second about what is actually happening. We, we, we're great, you know, I hate to use the word lucky, blessed that it has not surfaced in the manner that it has in other cities here. We will broad strokes, you know, make statements that it's because that we've been so dedicated to equity and, and some of the things, but what, what I want to guarantee, which is, is that is because we have such strong accountability to one another. And I mean that in the community, that I am accountable to my people, just like you are accountable to your staff, just like they're accountable to you. And we are all looking and making sure that we take care of one another because that's how community is built. And that's how we continue to grow and foster and develop our community as a whole. When we look at, as Councilmember Meek addressed earlier, community policing and, you know, I know, I mean, you know, just like I do, May Jackson sat in my seat, in this seat, you know, she and Alice Rodriguez were like dead on community policing. And we saw the benefits, the city as a whole saw the benefits of what it was. There's no mistaking that people who are actually available to walk neighborhoods and go in businesses and say, hey, how you doing to the business and shop owners make a difference. Because at that point, I know that if it comes time for me, as you said, Chief Holt, to stand up for my neighborhood, you know, because you can't police your way out of it. Sometimes you've got to wrap your arms around and close it up yourself. I can do that if I have, you know, the confidence that, and, and trust that PD has my back, right? But I can't do that if I don't know. You know, I know, I've talked to, so you know me, I got to look at it from all kinds of perspectives. So I called every cop I knew, especially every African American cop I knew. And that's from all branches and agencies, from the Fed to the DPS, to constables, to, you know, other PDs. And I was like, okay, you know, from the policy perspective, what are we missing? You know, what is it that, you know, we can do to, to make sure? And he said, well, there's no, and each of them, each of them, each of them, you know, men and women alike. And they said, there's, there's no, you can't policy your way out of this until you wrap the whole community involved in it. So I, I say all that to say, you know, I am going to continue to ask that, you know, from a city management perspective, we find a way to make a pathway. If it's, if it's got to be a hybrid program that adds a form of, of community and neighborhood policing in it, that that's something we focus on because I was watching something on, whatever Instagram, and a, a man owned a building and he was, he was painting a Black Lives Matter tag on the steps leading up to his, leading up to the building. He was outside painting and the woman stopped and she says, you know, I appreciate your message, but you can't deface property like this. And so they go back and forth about it. And he was like, well, I'm not doing anything wrong. He's like, she's like, this is private property. I know the owner. And he was like, oh, okay. Well, you might want to call the police. So they called the police, the police officer rolls by, he looks at the gentleman, realizing that that's the building owner because he knew that as a neighborhood police officer. And, you know, he was like, ma'am, he owns the building, he can do what he wants to with his steps. But imagine had he not known that man? We would have been looking at a whole nother situation. And, you know, and I think that that's imperative that we go through. I mean, I know just from the, the businesses that are in my district, the difference that it makes that you all pop in every now and then and ask and check on them how they're doing. I mean, and that, that's personal and that goes deep and it means a lot. And I think that that's the only way we're going to continue to, to solidify this already shored up foundation that we have in Waco with PD is to continue and grow the efforts of, of community policing, neighborhood policing because it's relational. You know, I mean, I get the law is the law and these are transactions and, you know, ipso facto one, two, you know, but the relational part, you, you, you can't, that can't happen out inside a car. And that can't happen if I don't know, you know, anything about the children in the neighborhood. It just can't, you know, and looking at the reimagining policing things, I agree with you wholeheartedly and look forward to the development and support that happens with the behavior team out of the Colorado model. I think that our foundations have seen the intensity that we need that kind of support and are looking to support you and, and as well as the county. And we appreciate that kind of stuff because it, there has got to be a way for us to compartmentalize because, you know, police officers are police officers. I don't know when you all became therapists and psychologists and all the things that you're expected to be. But it's a level that has to add to, to a burden that you have to bear in your job and responsibility. So any assistance that we can get to help you all with that is a priority for us because it, wellness of our city is our goal, period. I am curious and want to know what's next in our steps. I know you spoke about Deputy City Manager Ford and that he would be looking to see how, you know, that you are all addressing where, where we can go with community policing. But, you know, I want to know what's next for, for, with that. I also am curious, as you have, and, and we've seen nationally, these officers who have multiple complaints against them, is there some sort of internal document that tracks complaint, personal complaints, specifically use of force complaints on officers? If it exists as a whole, does it exist here? And, you know, how do you keep from, I know in education they pass bad, bad, passing bad teacher and you just move from department to department. So, you know, is there a way to, to track that? And you mentioned the, I know that the legislature is now going back to, to do some more work that was left out in the Sandra Bland Act in 17 because, you know, unfortunately it got whittled down to the bare bones because it did nothing at the end when we got to an agreeable act to address racial profiling and any of those things. And it ended up being a mental health bill, but there were some, some things that were tragically left on the, the, the House floor about Sandra Bland Act. And so I'm hoping that they do get to more things about that. And I appreciate the fact that in your, in your diligence and quest to bring, continue to bring equity and education in your force that you've seen, you know, been to San Jose and done REI and all the leadership has done that because those things impact how, how that level of trust is built and continues to be fortified within our district. I think people need to know that more. I don't know that enough people know all the steps that you've taken and that several members of the police force and city management team went to do those things. That's something that we have to continually say and find in our marketing, you know, if you don't tell your story, who's going to tell it for you? And I mean, I don't know that anybody needs to give you a cookie because you did what you were supposed to do, but if they don't know you did, you know, picks or it didn't happen. We are in a digital age. And so I need for, you know, people to understand that our police department is, are taking those steps and, you know, understand the, you know, historically what, what policing in the United States was meant to do and how just because you walk in a room, that could, you know, it's a whole nother story if you walk, you know, weren't invited in this door and just walk in, what that could mean and what that could trigger. And that is, it's very different and people don't have any idea about that. But the fact that you did make sure in your course of education to learn and know the difference is important. So, you know, whatever I can do to assist and help and get that message communicated, I am wholeheartedly willing to do that because I think it's important. And I thank you in advance for the work that you will be doing to continue to galvanize our, our community and, and create a pathway for more of those young men and women who are playing ball in the park to look up and see officers and say, you know what? I want to be like Officer Holt. And so then that, 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 that forwards policing in our community because it's going to come from our, from our roots. You know, it's the, the soil has already been cultivated to speak that. And so we understand and we have more homegrown officers who know and love Waco like we do. God, that's a good thing.
Thank you so much.
Chief, I, I really do appreciate this presentation. I think it's been very worthwhile and I have expressed many times how proud I am of our force and the, the job that you, you have done and that prior chiefs have done to, to reach out to communities of color, to understand the REI race equity training is obviously a huge piece of that, but also the, the connections that you formed with various leaders have, have been really meaningful. You know, none of this can keep a bad situation like the murder of George Floyd, George Floyd from happening in Waco. And that's the reality. You could have a, a bad situation, but we're doing everything. I think we're doing everything that can reasonably be done to, to try to keep that from happening. And so, you know, I, I want us to pat ourselves on the back, but I don't want us to kid ourselves that nothing like that could ever happen in, in Waco, Texas, because the reality is it could. But we've got great police officers who are, you know, I'm so proud of every police officer I know on the Waco Police Force. I'm impressed with them. I know what a difficult job they're, they do. And I know that I don't even understand how difficult and dangerous it is. So, you know, I do think we need to, we need to continue to have conversations about next steps and whether there is a, a version of neighborhood policing that, that we can afford and that we can implement here in Waco. So I look forward to continued conversations about this. And it needs to be, you know, we, we don't need a knee jerk reaction based on the, the national outcry that has been so, it's such an important message that needs to be heard. We need a thoughtful, continuing, ongoing conversation about this. And I, I know that we will have that. What I don't want to have is for us to just have this conversation today and then it ends there because there's too, there's too much work still that needs to be done. So thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything that else they want to add before we close here on this item, Chief? Anything further?
No, I think we've covered, covered a lot of it. We'll certainly bring you additional.
We'll, we'll certainly bring you, uh, additional, uh, information and, and discussion moving forward.
Okay, very good. Um, we're going to have to, uh, skip the budget, um, item. Uh, we have a budget and audit, uh, meeting coming up, uh, I believe next, sometime in the next few days, next couple of weeks. So we, we can cover that item there. Um, are there any requests for future agenda items?
Um, as we prepare for budget, I know that it just been something looking at, I was wondering if I could get, uh, staff to give an analysis of our top 10 contractors who we use by dollar amount. Um, so I can just see how that, how that's going as far as our contractor that we use and that's in all departments, but just who are the, the, where are we spending our most money?
Yes, ma'am, we can get that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:31 PM.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.074, city council member for District Four. Two, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.074, future city manager Bradley Ford. Three, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072. And four, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:31 PM.